Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the April 12th, 2023 meeting of the Franklin School Board. The meeting has been properly posted. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Alexandrovich.
Here.
Mrs. Witkowski.
Here.
Dr. Beer.
Here.
Dr. Khan.
Here.
Mrs. Sapersky.
Here.
Mr. Sprague.
Here.
We are all present.
Thank you. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Alan, will you lead it, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I am looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. School presentation, Franklin High School. Mr. Vollo, please.
Good evening, everyone. I'm joined by students today from one of our Capstone courses at the high school. And what makes this, I guess, opportunity unique is these students not only learn at the high school, but they've taken a series of courses. And this year, they also spend time at one of our elementary schools, Pleasant View specifically. And they're here because they want to be able to share kind of what their experience has been. And also, they're people who have, you know, interesting stories about where they want to go next and everything else. So we'll do some quick introductions. I'll let each one of them introduce themselves.
My name's Olivia Schuler.
My name's Morgan Chisholm.
My name's Elizabeth Barham.
All right. So I'll talk through some general overview things around their course and their capstone and their experience, as well as just some really quick school improvement items. So, Dr. Mo, if you want to advance the slide for me. You know, reminder that, you know, previous years, we talked about our school improvement plans. And I know you get those updates throughout the year. Our school improvement team and school leadership team mission is on the screen in front of you. And I think it's important to remember that what we're doing and what these students have done are part of that, you know, goal work. When we talk about students having experiences like this, and they're three representatives of a capstone in the high school, these are experiences we want every student to have before they graduate. So, you know, being college and career-ready means you've done things like this in, you know, service of your education beyond FHS. So if you can keep going, Dr. Mo. Our three goal areas are there, and these are just a reminder of, you know, when you think about work like this, really talking about student achievement and also student engagement, you know, in a sense, because when students are, you know, involved in things beyond, you know, your typical experiences, I'm assuming there's maybe more engagement there for those students in their experience. So if you press the next slide, Dr. Mo. In terms of the course, REACH is what we typically call it, but Revitalizing Education and Child Health is the capstone in the childhood and education strand of our Family Science Department. So in terms of where this course has been going, these students are part of, we believe, the sixth year partnership between PV of going off and actually instructing and working with students in different ways at Pleasant View Elementary. This year, we have students in grades one, two, and three working with our students from Franklin High School during the day. So they go there during their block. They work with the students, they come back. So another benefit of block scheduling, as well as the proximity, obviously, between our two campuses, you know, only helped by that new little neighborhood passage through there. So if you go through the next slides, there's a mix of pictures taken of students. And this was the Friday before break, so we had a few less students in class that day. Spring break, that was. But there's also a mix there. And the quote there is from an actual, you know, student at Pleasant View. I believe that was a third grader who shared that. And again, third graders say some wild things, so do first and second graders. But you see that quote there if you keep advancing. You know, as you think about things, the other part there is you have a quote from students in the top there that's highlighted. And then you have a quote from the teacher who is working with our students from first grade. And then, as you think about these different lessons and activities, oftentimes, there are things that, you know, our students plan. And it's also a mix of that or things that they need support with or help with at PV where they can be of benefit. So, again, you look at these things. This was a lesson. So every group was running a lesson on the Great Barrier Reef, I believe, this particular day in first grade, I think it was. And you look at that quote there, again, just, again, great quotes from our actual learners over at Pleasant View. And they were kind enough to let me take along for the day. And when you think about things, you have our students engaging them, but also the students themselves are reading and interacting, our Pleasant View students. So, again, it's a great opportunity and one that, you know, exists, you know, and really culminates, you think about our students going to education and our students, you know, really creating that next generation. You know, they're helping not only, you know, demonstrate stewardship in our community, but also get experience that you really can't get, you know, just in a classroom at the high school. Again, this is still the Great Barrier Reef, and now we're back into, I believe, this was a second or third grade classroom, if I'm not mistaken. And again, just, you know, the students would be engaged different ways. We even did this during the pandemic. We had our students engage, you know, via Google Meets, just like, you know, we were doing in all sorts of different ways as well. But I remember being in the main commons and seeing our students, you know, staggered around that whole space. And they were engaging their, you know, elementary peers that way. Not peers, I suppose. And this was a word cloud made by one of our elementary teachers, asking their students to say why they like their high school buddy. So, again, like, it's neat. They're nice and kind. And they're kind enough and nice enough to be here. But, you know, really, when you look at those things, I mean, it really is a great experience for the high school, and it's a great experience for our students at Pleasant View as well. And it's something that, if you could scale something or grow, you know, additional opportunities for students with our district, I mean, it really is a great benefit for everybody. And without any further ado, though, I'd like to let Olivia and Morgan and Elizabeth talk to you more and answer any questions you might have for them. But, you know, like, in terms of some things I thought you might want to hear about, or maybe, you know, what their future plans are and where they plan on doing it. And then from there, maybe you can ask them some questions about their experiences. So if you just want to share maybe kind of what you've done and what you want to do next and where you want to do it, that'd be cool.
Okay, so, right now, I'm currently working at a gym called We Rock the Spectrum. And it's a gym that's all-inclusive for children who are on the spectrum. I love working with those kids. I have a range of kids who are non-verbal to kids who are verbal. And my REACH classes have helped a lot with that. Ms. Kraus goes over some, like, sign language that some of the kids would use and stuff like that. And then we also learn tactics for, like, CPR, first aid, all of that stuff, which I needed to start my job anyway. I will be continuing my education at Marion in the fall. That's in Fond du Lac. I'm going to get my minor in psychology and sign language, and then I'm going to major in pediatric occupational therapy.
Okay, my name is Morgan. I am also attending Marion in the Fall. I am majoring in elementary education, and I'm planning to minor in language arts. And my goal is I want to teach first to third grade. It's like my ideal range. And then I also am thinking about teaching middle school, and there I would like to be an English teacher.
I'm Elizabeth, as we said before. And I will be attending Carroll University in Waukesha with an undergraduate in psychology and a master's in pediatric occupational therapy. I also work at We Rock the Spectrum and REACH. And the classes, the prerequisites have helped a lot. We've learned about sensory processing disorders, which a lot of our kids on the spectrum or just with other intellectual and developmental disabilities have those disorders. So it's been really helpful to learn about that and the type of activities that they enjoy and that we can use to help bring them back to a normal level, help them focus. We've learned about how to transition children from different activities, which can definitely be a big challenge in working with kids with ADD. So it's been very helpful in my work, and it'll continue to help me in my career.
Please.
First of all, I'm very proud of all of you. How did you find this path? It sounds like you've all sort of identified an area that you're passionate about. I'm just wondering how your teachers and your counselors, sort of, how'd you get on that right path to begin with? Do you even remember?
Okay, so my little brother is on the autism spectrum. So that's where I kind of started my interest in everything. And then Ms. Cluck helped to introduce me to the different classes that we offer. Like freshman year, you don't really have that much choice. But then, when you're picking your next classes, and you can go deeper into, like, the child development classes, the REACH, like, capstone classes, she helped to guide me towards there, once I went to her with, like, what I wanted to do. And then, just between the classes and then Saber Preschool, we do that in child development, too. So we have some of the little kiddos come, and we get to, like, plan lessons for them and basically teach them. That helped a lot because that was, like, my first experience working with, like, little, little kids. So that kind of helped to continue my growth and interest in what I wanted to study.
So I always kind of knew I wanted to do something with kids, but I never knew if I wanted to do education or healthcare or any of that. So in junior year is when I took my first child development class, and it was with Mrs. Kraus, and it was child development one. And we learned mostly about, like, toddlers and, like, babies. And I was like, I don't know how much I like that compared to, like, a kid. And that same year, I also took child development, too, which then introduced me to Saber Preschool and lesson planning. And I literally, like, fell in love with it. Like, I just saw, that's what I want to do. And I could see myself doing that. And then it was the end of that year is when Mrs. Kraus said, hey, I really think you would enjoy REACH class. You should definitely do it. It's something that will benefit you. And I'm so thankful I did it because we are learning so much more. She's teaching us how to learn and read the different types of standards that we need to meet, like, our math standards and learning what is considered math for elementary students. And I just think that's super beneficial.
I was inspired by my older brother, who's on the autism spectrum. And he had a really hard time in school with teachers not understanding him or with not being able to make friends. And I didn't want other people to go through that. So I joined Best Buddies in Middle School, which is a club that aims to connect people with intellectual and developmental disabilities to their peers without, and just make a more inclusive environment. And through that, I learned a lot about people with disabilities. And I've been able to help build more meaningful friendships and make our school a more inclusive place. And from that, I thought I wanted to do special education. So I interned in our special education department at the high school. And I really enjoyed it. But one time, I was talking to Ms. Gilroy, and she was like, have you looked into occupational therapy? I know you're really artistic and you're really hands-on person. I think that would be good for you. And I looked into it, and I was like, wow, these people do so many creative, different tasks. And I thought this would just be a really engaging career that would find new creative and inspiring ways to use my talents. So I kind of just built off of that. And I've gotten more involved with the special needs route through my job. And it's just been a really rewarding and cool experience.
How many, how many people are, how many kids are in this class, in this outreach program?
Thirteen.
Well, total, twenties.
Oh, yeah. But we have two classes. Sorry, that's my.
So our class, we have thirteen. And then in their class, they have thirteen. So it's a pretty small class.
Ms. Kraus, is that a typical number, twenty-six total, that you see each year?
You know, it varies. And sometimes, sometimes we'll have one section, and it'll be a little bit bigger. But this year, we have two sections.
And so all of you go to Pleasant View, or do you?
Yeah, we just do different grades. So Morgan and I are in the same REACH class. So we do first grade. And then Elizabeth is in the other REACH class. So she does second and third grade.
It seems to me very inspiring that, you know, students at, you know, from high school itself, they're able to define what you guys want to do, which is very inspiring because, you know, with the student loans and all that stuff, you know, which is happening right now, where fifty-five of the students enter into undergraduate not knowing what they want to do. It's good to have these resources at the high school, the teachers and the counselors who are getting you guys and advising you guys. So kudos to them and kudos to you guys, because, you know, that really saves time and money. So thank you for what you guys are doing. Thank you.
It does seem like the outreach is so much different than from when we were in high school. But
I don't think we're
We're, clearly, it's a long time ago. But, but it gets back to, it gets back to a curriculum question of, of, you know, when did this, how far have we come in how short of a time to get, to make these possibilities available?
Well, so I think it's been about six years with this particular partnership with PV that it's been occurring. So at least, you know, longer than I've been at the high school. And I'm not sure if there were things similar to it. I don't know, Lynn, if you'd have anything else you'd add. But, I mean, like, you know, Mrs. Kraus has been a, you know, key part in making these partnerships and then expanding them this year to include a new grade. So.
We had also worked with Southwood Glen for a little while, and we did some things with kids.
My son, who is in his thirties, was in one of those programs at Southwood Glen. I have pictures of him sitting with all the little children around him. Unfortunately, he decided he wanted nothing to do with children, he's a teacher. But, I mean, this has been going on for a long time. I think he graduated in 2001. So I know for sure it's been going on since then. I'm a former teacher, and I don't think there's a better job in the whole wide world than being a teacher. So congratulations that you found your niche. I think that's great.
I have more, like, some questions. I don't know at what point you want to, I'm just gonna ask, to what extent does this have to do with the future educator? Is it a strand? Or I don't know what the noun is that you're proposing. Like, where would this fit in?
So now, this is basically the only thing that we have to really provide students with any interest in education, exposure. I mean, you think about, like, this goes through that early childhood, so third grade, you know, in terms of birth to there, in terms of that. So, like, anything that we would want to add would be additive to not competing with. So that idea of having something in addition for students to do in terms of a, you know, general education class or a field experience class or a class on special education, wherever we land with in terms of bringing something to you, the idea is there's more than for a student, whether they want to go into OT or they want to be a elementary or middle school teacher or a high school teacher, different opportunities and things. Because right now, if you see yourself kind of beyond that and you don't like the littles at all, you maybe didn't proceed past, you know, the, you know, first, you know, child development class, or maybe did Saber Preschool, like, oh, that's not for me.
Yeah.
Because the thought of the littles wasn't as exciting to you. But, again, so it's adding to, and again, like, there's things that, I know Mrs. Kraus can tell me, and obviously, probably tell the students, too, exactly what this transcripts to when you go to college in terms of the coursework that this replaces and gives you a leg up on. So, again, we don't, we don't want to, like, lose anything that we have. We want to grow that opportunity, too. And again, I, Mrs. Lang, who is not here, but if she was, she would agree that, you know, in terms of we have OT or, you know, teaching positions open, any Franklin graduate gets an interview, I think that's a fair thing to say. If not a job, I can guarantee that, you know, I'm not the principal hiring manager. But I'd love if they all came back in about, you know, four to, I'm not sure how long the, seven, seven years, when we have those needs.
Seven!
Because, you know, we think about those things, there's not enough people going into the field. So, like, that's the idea, is, like, we want to really grow that and grow that capacity. And again, like, there's also students who might go into, you know, like, work in, you know, childcare settings in different ways. So, not suggesting every one of those students goes into, you know, an education career who's in REACH right now. But, I mean, they're going to leave with credentials, coursework, and things through those courses that really let them be employable right now, as well as, you know, do things towards that next level.
Yeah, can I?
Please do.
I just wanted to say that also, when I applied to my current job that I have right now, REACH and Child Development Two and Child Development One gave me all of, like, the qualifications that I needed to get that job. And because I did that job, I am now working, like, on a partnership with Elizabeth. And then my job for our REACH capstone project. And we're developing summer camp curriculum for kids. Also, when I applied to my college, I told them about all of my REACH classes and my child development classes, and they thought that was really impressive. And I was able to get a head start on that. So I'm now going into college with, I think, six college credits right now. And then I have another AP test that they have to add in. So this has definitely gave me the, like, leg up and opportunities that I would have otherwise not been able to have. And if I didn't have these classes, I probably wouldn't even be looking at anything in the educational field.
And this class honestly applies to so many different careers, even more careers that relate back to the school environment, like speech pathology, counseling, other careers maybe outside of the school environment, would be a child life specialist, and anything in the healthcare field, really, where you'll be working with children and even working with elderly or other adults. You're kind of learning those interaction skills, communication skills. We're learning about trauma right now and how that can affect a person's life. So we're really learning a lot about other people around us, and those skills will really help us with any career involved with other people.
I have sort of, like, generalized questions now. So, to, so last year, when there was the conversation about sunsetting certain programs and then folding, so we're hearing a lot about the excellent guidance and advice that they've gotten from individual teachers. I'm just wondering, where do you see most of your advice coming from? Your guidance counselor, individual teachers, or your advisory block?
I think most of my advice is coming from Mrs. Kraus, because I see her every single day, because I not only have REACH with her, which is every other day, I'm also in another capstone with her, which is Inspired Design. And we see her every single day. And she's always there for us to talk to. And then she also is there to help me decide, like, if I should, like, what I should put on, like, my college applications and all that, to make sure, like, I am getting those credits because I am passing this class and all that.
I would agree with that. I get a lot of my stuff from Ms. Kraus. She's just always been like that teacher who's there for you. I went through something very traumatic back in December, and I eat lunch with Ms. Kraus every day. So she's just, I would get, I would say that I get a lot of my advice, my, you know, stuff from Ms. Kraus. The counselors are there when you want to go to them. But sometimes, Ms. Kraus already has the answers.
Yeah, I would say Ms. Kraus is definitely the most influential. She's written me, like, various letters of recommendation. She was a reference for my job, for scholarships I've applied to, for my college applications. And it's been really helpful to have her there. And I also have to shout out Ms. Gilroy, because she's been so kind to me. She told me about my job, where I'm at now. I love it so much. She helped me prepare for interviews for scholarships. And it's just really nice to have someone to go to.
She's one of your guidance counselors, correct?
Yes.
And, Mr. Vollo, would you say that this is sort of the plan you had in terms of sunsetting inroads, but making it more of a, everybody has an opportunity to find their own pathway, not just those specific students that were in that program? I know that we talked about that last year.
I'm not sure if any of you were inroad students.
I don't think, I mean, I'm guessing they weren't, but that's
Yeah, but that's not by design or anything else. I think it's just, like, when we think about things and, you know, like, that idea of having, you know, career-based learning experiences and education that kind of ties into that, there are examples of that. But also, like, that's, that's the goal, is every student should have those experiences. And again, we were, weren't really getting something that was replicating something different, per se, outside of, you know, like, the clustering and, you know, grouping of the students there. And, and again, like, that's, that's not, like, you know, these students who are willing to be here on a, you know, a Wednesday night, and they're fantastic and everything else. But, you know, like, it's, so it's really, like, that's, that's a coincidence. It's not by any specific choice.
I have a question. So the teachers that you work with at Pleasant View, do they influence you at all either, in terms of how you're feeling about your choice?
Especially when we're visiting the first grade, is, like, that's my top choice at the moment. So I like watching her and seeing exactly how she's running the class, how she uses her, like, attention grabbers, and how the children seem to just respect her, and she seems to understand them. So I don't really have many conversations with her, but just the way that she runs her classroom, it really does have an impact on me because I see myself in that position in four years or so. So I really do enjoy seeing her.
I've had one or two conversations with her, with the first grade teacher. And she's just kind of encouraged me to keep going into, like, my education healthcare stuff. But I think one of, like, the most inspiring things is when you take what you've learned in class, and you're like, obviously, it's true, and you believe it. But then you get to go and experience, and they're, like, actually doing it. And you're like, hey, we just learned that last week, you know? And that's kind of cool, because you get to see that what you're learning has a purpose. And then that purpose, when you apply it to, like, real-world situations, it actually impacts the people around you and not just yourself. And it's not just another grade in the gradebook.
I don't know if it applies to Pleasant View exactly, but, like, when we're talking about taking those skills into the real world, some of the stuff we did, even in our, our Saber Preschool, like, for one of my clinicals in my master's program, we have to run a preschool. And I've already done that through this course of programs. So it's, like, really inspiring, uplifting, kind of gives me confidence. And I know what I'm doing, and I've been prepared for this. So it's really cool to know that that's something I will actually be doing, and it applies to my future.
Mr. Vollo, I'd be really interested when you work together with Mr. Thompson, whenever we hear from him next, just to hear about, I know we have, you're, one of your goals was to have every student have some feel-like experience like this. And I'd love to hear specifically how those numbers are going. And then, I would also just be interested in what all different certifications we're offering kids. Like, we, everybody, I feel like everyone I've talked to has achieved two to three different certifications. And just to get an enumeration of that would be interesting. And I think that that would probably be sort of his area. So, anyway.
Anyone else? Questions, comments? Linda, please.
Yeah, it's great to be able to make all these connections and relationships. You just kind of wonder, can we do it across other job categories? This is easier because it's school and your interest in school. But I wonder how you, how that works across other, you know, I mean, you mentioned how you learn something and it applies. So we all, they're all in math class, but they're not going back and say, oh, this is how I use math. It's not, the same connections aren't possible? Or haven't we been creative enough to have that experience for all of our kids?
I think we have, you know, like, our, any capstone, including the engineering capstone, or, you know, the business capstone, like, they're doing similar things. And you may recall, last year, we had more of a, like, we had people from different capstones in the back. And
Yep.
One of the things that, rather than that sort of speed dating setup of you get to talk to somebody for, like, two minutes, then rotate, 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 you have the idea is to really go, you know, deep with, you know, one capstone experience. And this one happens to be more connected to our community and our school community. Not that going to, you know, Alice Roller or Crohn's or something else isn't great as well. It is. But this is, you know, like, I think, of all the things, the bar community and the great things going on in it, this, to me, like, exemplifies that stewardship, you know, value that we have. And, and also just that, you know, being part of a better community, like, this is truly, like, you know, kind of it. So, like, every capstone, though, has that outreach. Just outreach looks different when you're working with Karma Labs, or you're working with this group or that group. So, you know, like, theirs just happens to be outreach to our local elementary school.
We also, the internships that the high school offers, not, like, just in the high school, but the community internships, those are really good opportunities because it's not just like a senior privilege thing. If you have that GPA and you worked for your grades, you can do it junior year, which I did. And I did it with a business, because that's what I was going to go into. And I hated it. So, so this year, I'm doing mine with my place of work, and I love it. So I think that also gives people who don't necessarily have, like, an exact capstone class, the opportunity to make those community connections because our school is so open to, you know, we have a list of people who you can do it with. But if you have a new person that you want to do an internship with, our school is very open to, let me figure out a way that you can get with that person, you know, like, let's meet about it. Mr. Thompson, he's really good about that. I kind of went into my internship late this year, but he was super good at, like, hey, let's meet, let's get caught up, let's, you know, let's try it. And, you know, Mr. Decker and Ms. Cluck are the two counselors I talk with the most. They're really open about, like, hey, you gave me this topic that you enjoy. Here's the list that I have for internships if you want to bring someone else in. So I think that even if we don't have a capstone class for everyone, like you were talking about math, you know, you can still go, if a college professor wants to sign your intern thing, you could intern with a college professor who teaches math. Or you could intern with, you know, we don't have, like, a NASA program here, but you could, like, whatever's in REACH is, like, basically, you could, the possibilities are endless.
For me, having my youth apprenticeship at Olivia and I's place of work in combination with REACH has only, like, solidified my career choice and given me the extra time to work on my capstone project during that youth apprenticeship, because it is for my work. So it's really nice to have that in combination and kind of get more experience with what I want to do.
I also have an internship, but mine is not a community one. Mine is within the school. I do it with my English teacher. And as mentioned before, I want a minor in language arts. So having this opportunity to see how she's creating So having this opportunity to see how she's creating these lesson plans, how she's grading, how she's deciding to present the information is just really interesting for me to see. Because while I won't be presenting it to high schoolers, I will be presenting it to other students. So I like having that opportunity as well that do something within the school.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I would just say I've had the opportunity to be in the classroom a couple of times this year. So thank you for everything you do, Kraus and the students, because they are very interactive in looking at what the lesson is. They're aligning it to standards. They're looking at different modalities of learning, but then the passion like you here tonight was really there. So it was fun to like see that going on in all the planning that they were putting into just this little bit of time that they get with the students. Then to come back and kind of set the plans again. So it's been neat to actually be in there and see the action too. So nice job and thank you for working with our students. That's a new way to give back.
And again, thank you to Mrs. Kraus and Linda for being here tonight. And you know, we had the first, the second and third grade teachers from PV on the slide deck as well. But this truly does, you know, we think about being part of a better community and everything else. I can't overstate that, you know, things like this and events like this and experiences like this are something that truly I think lets us live that in a very organic way through our teaching and learning that's going on. So, you know, kudos to these kids because they're awesome and, you know.
I, I just need to say one quick thing.
Oh, yeah.
I know. So two out of the three of these ladies are from Southwood Glen. And I will say that when they were just little ones in elementary school, like they stood out as far as their leadership and being great role models and so compassionate for others. So I'm so proud of them and I'm so pleased to hear how like our school system has really been a great support for you to continue to grow and evolve and follow this path, you know, to really use those strengths. So come back when you're done in seven years and we'll bring you onboard here in Franklin. So I just, I am so impressed with all three of you. So.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You guys do a quick picture. Come on, I see you out there.
Christine.
I can't help it. Elizabeth and Olivia.
No, you look very nice. You're very well presented. You have to be in front of the thing. Move all the way down.
Olivia didn't wear her black.
Can you use some of those first aid skills we talked about? You're good, you're good. Very nice. You got it?
Yes.
Oh, you've been high schoolers.
Oh, everybody gets.
The same thing that the little kids can.
All right. Nobody signed up for community comment. Does anybody care, does anybody care to comment? All right. Well, then I will not read the community comment section. Item six, consent agenda. I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda. So move.
Second.
Our motion has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. School board announcements. So tonight is Mr. Alexandrovich's last meeting. So, so we put school board announcements back in, back in the agenda for tonight in case anybody would like to say a few things about Alan. Please, Linda.
Alan, thank you for your almost 10 years of service to the Franklin School Board from 2013 to 2023 for years of growth and change for the district. Your positive attitude kept the district moving forward with the completion of the Saber Center, building of the new middle school and the addition of 4K. Change included the selection of two superintendents, Judy Miller in 2017 and Annalee just last year. As you know, school board is a team effort and you have always found a way to contribute, contribute, including taking on the budget document, being a good listener and always being spectacular. Thank you.
Alan, I, I wrote my thoughts because I'm more of a writer than an orator, so I gave them to you. But no one should ever doubt that you are truly a kind person at heart and your actions always speak to your kindness and your compassion. And you are truly a gentleman. It's been a privilege to get to know you.
Alan, thank you for the service to the community. I have learned more about finances and insurance from you than I ever have before. I appreciate that and I am going to miss how you always tell me you're spectacular. So I hope someone else picks up the slack on the board.
Alan, I just came to know you for two years now on the board. And one of the things which I always noticed about you is that you, no matter what the situations are, you're always relaxed, you know? So thank you for your service. I really appreciated, you know, your input, you know, talking to you. So thank you for what you have done for the city of Franklin. Thank you.
Alan, I first met you when I came as a parent with a concern to the board. And I remember thinking that you were so kind to give me time and to listen to me and not make me feel like I was crazy and really listen to my concerns and, and worked to help me resolve them. And so I really appreciated that. And that experience with you was part of what made me want to join the board myself. And then I did and I got to know you even better. And I would say one of the things I most appreciate you, about you and working with you on the board was your ability to hear many different perspectives and hear, you know, everyone's different thoughts and, you know, make decisions. And sometimes we agreed and sometimes we didn't, but to take that and to move on with that and to continue with that positive attitude. There are no grudges held. There was no animosity. There was always just a, we work together as a board and this is what we do. And we're going to, you know, continue moving forward. We were always moving forward, never getting stuck with anything. And I just appreciate that kind of positivity and that I think everyone has spoken to your being spectacular. I think that, that seems to me like that's how you live your life. Like we don't have time for being negative. We're just going to be positive. We're going to assume positive intent in all of our interactions. And I just think that's a really great kind of attitude for all of us to aspire to. So I hope, I hope we can continue to do that and I thank you for your time and kind of leading us in that way.
Thank you. And I'd like to say that it's been a real honor to work with all of you. It has been a joy to work with all of you. Yes, we disagree at times, but we have to move forward as a board and we always have. And I appreciate that too. Thank you. Alan, you, we always talk about part of, being part of a better community and nobody, nobody shows that better than you do. I've been on the board for four years and while I was running, I came in here and didn't really know anybody on the board. I knew them to say hi. You were the first one to come up and say, hi, I'm Alan. Good to meet you. Welcome to running the board. What can I do to help you? And we are community volunteers and that's, that's what we are and that's what we do. And so, so thank you for making Franklin a better community. It's truly what, it's truly what you do. I do have.
A desk accessory.
A desk accessory? It says recognition of service presented to Alex, Alan Alexandrovich. It's spelled correctly. In recognition of your contribution and many years of service to the Franklin School District, thank you for your support of excellence in student achievement, continuous improvement and active partnerships with Franklin families and community members, Franklin Public Schools. So I'd like to present this with, this to you and also I'd really like to present this to you. This is, this is from the W A S B, not Franklin Schools. And it says certificate of commendation to Alex Alexandrovich.
They spelled your last name right.
We just looked, they did, they did spell your last name right.
Oh goodness.
We'll get that taken care of.
They get the last name.
So we cross it off.
Oh goodness.
Well, you should know that is the worst problem I have in life. People don't know how to spell your person.
It might have happened twice tonight, so it happens to the best of us.
So.
Justin, can you get a picture?
Oh, okay. You guys have to hand this off?
Dr. Vo is our photographer this evening.
Yeah, you're doing pictures. You're both wearing your shirts. Let's put it in a spot.
He could do the whole board, but we don't know on that.
This looks really awkward. There you go. That's, that's better. Very good. Okay. That's as good as it's going to get. Good job, fellas. Oh boy. Jan and I don't have our shirt tons, so we'll be on the end.
We'll, we'll anchor the end because we are not in uniform tonight. All right.
Go team.
There's probably both in tears, really.
Here we go.
All right. School board calendar. Key communicators group is meeting Tuesday, April 18th, 2023 from five to seven. Excuse me, a regular board of education meet, meeting on April 26th at six o'clock here at the ECC. And also May 10th at the ECC at six. District administrator update, please.
All right. Good evening. I know our high school team left, but I wanted to thank Olivia, Morgan, Elizabeth, Ms. Kraus, who's done a great job in the classroom. It's been great to get to know her this year and Mr. Volle and the whole team for being here to present. It's always nice to hear and see the experience and mostly have students here as we know, talking about it. I also want to express my thank you to Alan. Like I've only gotten to know you about a year now. I think I started the interview process. But I've always found you very welcoming. You kept a very straight face in the interviews. So once I came on board, it was very nice to know that you're pretty much just smiley, spectacular and as others said, like a great listener. I get the privilege to be on the library board with you also. So our time together like will continue. But Alan and Linda were also a great welcome when I came on as we were a golf team. We call ourselves a team, but we did have a lot of fun and my husband Chris joined us. And it was a great way to get to know people. You were very nice at being patient with my lack of golf ability, but also introducing me to people along the way on the course. So thank you. You'll be missed on the board, but see you at the library. And we hope that you stay in key communicators with us next year. I know we have our meeting Tuesday, but I'm hoping that you can continue to be a part of that group with all of us moving forward because you bring a good perspective to it. You don't have to decide right now.
Too late.
That's excellent. And speaking of key communicators, it is our meeting on Tuesday. It's our third and final meeting for this year. It's our group that the board and myself brought together of internal and external stakeholders. I'm excited for us to have some of our school administrators diving into school improvement plans on Tuesday as we've kind of drilled down through the coherence plan, plan to the student level. It's kind of nice hearing the high school team tonight and you kind of got the student level and you hear a little bit Tuesday about how that pieces together. Andy's also going to be presenting budget one-on-one in eight to nine minutes. So get ready for that speed dating round. But it's been a great opportunity with the key communicator group and looking forward to being together again on Tuesday. If you notice Laura Langhor is not with us tonight. Her and Jenna Rosinski are at a teacher job fair. That's he's the one that's putting on, I believe in Waukesha. So they were very gung ho and had their freebies to give out and had reviewed the list of people that were going to for sure be at the job fair. So we're optimistic that we have some great candidates that they'll meet and bring back for the interview process. We continue to partner with SWSA to advocate for budgeting for K-12 education. As we know, Andy and Mike went and presented to the joint finance committee about a week and a half ago. We were supposed to have a lunch and learn with chamber members this Friday, got canceled because it was hard to get enough people under kind of short notice, I think is what came to. But we continue to put out a presentation if there's groups we know we can get in front of and talk about what it means to support K-12 education. We would take the opportunity, but I'm really thankful to Andy and Mike for going and making that presentation on behalf of Franklin Public Schools. Sorry, I have a breath tonight. Community conversations are continuing with Christine. She's met with the secondary parents, all of them that were at our listening sessions to also offer and meet, to have one-on-one meetings to continue to work to improve our services and understand what that looks like to the stakeholder, what we can do to improve. Our elementary group also has meetings coming up. So those are Thursday, April 20th, an evening meeting, six to 7:30 here at the ECC. And then also Wednesday, April 26th, that's during the day from 9:30 to 11:00. So similar format that Christine used last time, partnering together just to listen to our stakeholders and learn and continuing to put together action steps of what we're doing to move forward. We have a busy week next week, Tuesday nights, key communicators. We also have Inspiring Hope in Suicide Prevention taking place at the Saber Center. So that's a viewing of a video you've probably seen a number of districts hosting it. We are combining with Whitno and Greenfield to host this. It's also a resource fair with community resources for national and local organizations around suicide prevention, mental health, things along those lines. So it's unfortunate that they're conflicting, but that's the way it worked out this time. The Saber Center is a busy place, which Tracy will tell us about tonight. But starting on the 24th of April, we have like three consecutive weeks of elementary concerts. Then we go into two consecutive weeks of band, choir and orchestra concerts. So if you need your fix of music, we have all ages on the stage, ready, ready to go. And also Into the Woods by Forte Theater Company opens this weekend. It runs the next two weekends. So if you haven't gotten your tickets, hopefully you have an opportunity. It's a great show for children too, like a nice full family performance. They try to do two performances a year really specific to that. I know board members could speak more specifically, but.
You're doing great.
Thank you. It's a nice one to take students, to kids, to take kids to, to give them that theater experience. One other item, well, two things. I want to thank Shawna LaPlante for her nine years of service as an administrator in the Franklin School District. We're excited for her and her family, her three young children and husband to move closer to family in Green Bay and have that support, that area. But as you saw in the personnel items tonight, she's turned in a resignation and has been accepted there. So we will actively start that search for the next leader, but I really just want to show our gratitude to her and her dedication here. And Saturday morning at 8:30, we have our ribbon cutting for the construction project in Franklin. It is complete. And anybody is invited to that to celebrate with the students, their families and see the house. If that's all I have, any questions, let me know.
Are we welcome to attend the listening sessions with elementary?
Absolutely.
Should we just let Darlene know or?
Definitely let Darlene know so we can post them if we have forum.
Great.
Are they on the calendar?
They will be in the Friday updates I do.
They were in last week's Friday.
And they'll be here at the ECC again.
Anybody else? Questions?
Go on Saturday. The construction project is so cool.
I've got it on my calendar.
Okay.
And I would just say, any board member who didn't attend a special ed listening session, I highly recommend going again. I, I won't be here, so I can't go, but if you haven't gone before, I highly recommend going. It's very informative.
All right. Thank you. Saber Center update. Mr. Stewart, please.
All right. Thank you for having me. All right. So the, I, basically I was hired, I believe, two years ago, just over two years ago to, to take the helm at the Saber Center after a, after a pause or a, at the end of our COVID pause of shows and the unfortunate passing on of the previous director. In those two years, I've learned a lot. Learned a lot about the school, the school board, the community. Learned a lot about the school, the school board, the community, and, uh, looking forward to, to all the years to come. Uh, in the last year, um, we've really, uh, really taken on this, our mission statement of inspiring success through learning experiences, student needs and active partnerships with the, with family and community. Each of my slides will, uh, will illuminate various areas of this mission statement as we go forward. Our objectives are provide venue support, enhance F H S performing arts and education. These are the same slides that I had last year, so it should be familiar to, uh, to most people on this board. One thing that we are developing further is that last one of providing a performance venue for incoming events of interest to the school and community. We'll touch on that here. Uh, usage is similar to last year. Uh, we host every single school in the district. We've actually increased programming to, uh, to also welcome the middle school drama program with their show. They had previously done it in the Forest Park Commons, and starting last year and again this year, we have brought that to the high school, so the students can start, uh, getting comfortable with a larger stage, with a actual performance stage and all the technology that, uh, that's involved there. Uh, they build their, uh, build the shows, and it really helps get them ready to come into that, uh, come into the high school programs. We also host several daytime, uh, events. Uh, today, we had a rings, our ring, um, meeting with Jostens for class rings with sophomore class. Uh, next week, I know a few of the administrators are coming for A P presentations for, from our A P students. So it really has become a place that classes and clubs can come and have that larger event space and have something outside the classroom to make some of those special events all that much more special. Also with our community events, we've hosted several community events. My calendar is very full for this summer with several Indian classical dance events, uh, Forte Theater Company, Academy for Performing Arts in Franklin, Next Step Dance. And we're also welcoming a new, um, a new performing arts, uh, organization, um, that is led by the lady that has actually been our music director for the Spring Musical the last two years. Shaleen Saleen is bringing her studio, uh, here for, for her summer camp. So, so, uh, any questions on any of that?
I would just clarify on, um, we're, uh, performing arts classes, elementary school band and choir, or band and orchestra hasn't.
No, the, the.
We don't have that anymore, so.
Yeah, oh, okay.
Elementary school band and orchestra doesn't exist anymore, so that, we don't have that yet, but.
Okay. Yeah, I do need to, need to edit that, thank you. It is, it is just the choir music programs.
Right, that, the kids, the elementary kids get to come and perform on the Saber.
Yep.
Center stage.
Yeah, so each school does come and, and perform, but you're right, we don't have the instrumental music programs anymore. So I do need to, do need to update that slide. Thank you.
Yep.
So our, uh, our community events so far have been rental events, with the exception of the, uh, U W, um, the U W marching band came and did a, did a performance one of the, this spring. Uh, otherwise, it has all been, um, rental events. So basically, we're just a host venue and receive rental income rather than promoting and building our own events for the community. And some of those events, I, I have some, uh, pictures of the Indian classical dance, Forte Theater. Uh, that's distinguished young women up there in the, uh, top right corner. Uh, they're excited to come back for this Wisconsin State Program for their scholarship, uh, scholarship competition. And please interject with any questions you have as I come up on slides. So facility upgrades, I'm always trying to upgrade and improve the, uh, facility. One of the main things this year is we did purchase, at the end of last year, we made the purchase, it was finally delivered this fall, a new grand piano for the, uh, for the main stage. The facility was never spec'd with a new piano, so the piano that, uh, we had, we either use a small electronic piano, which is very nice, sounds great, but it doesn't have much of a stage presence. Uh, the other grand piano that the district owned was over a hundred years old and had been basically a classroom piano since the nineteen-sixties. Had had several repairs over the year and years and really was in fairly poor condition, uh, needed new strings and had several cracks still in the soundboard. So a new piano was warranted, and we were able to, uh, secure the funding for that and have that delivered this fall. So we're very excited to have that for all of the concerts coming up. The other major upgrade really wasn't a financial investment upgrade. It was more of a, a integration of the technology that we already had that had never really been developed, and that is, uh, getting our orchestra pit integrated into the greater, um, greater system. The way that happened, the way it was being done before is we would just send a mix of all of the instruments in the, in the orchestra pit up to be sent out over the speakers. Um, I developed it so that we actually have individual control of every single, uh, instrument in the front, where we can actually hear and make that mix so much better, as well as giving the orchestra pit performers individual monitors of, so they can hear exactly what they need to hear when they're down in the orchestra pit, without just having a couple, a couple of really loud speakers down there that, uh, that, you know, can, can cause feedback issues and things like that. So it, it was quite a bit of work to do that, to get those technologies integrated, but, uh, we've, we're going into our second show of, uh, of having that all integrated, and it's going quite well. So, so there will be, uh, be more upgrades to come for next year, but, uh, those are the upgrades I've been working on for this year.
I would say it was neat to see our own students playing in the orchestra, um, for the last musical, and like with the headsets on, I was wondering how that all works. So that's really neat, because you could see how they were interacting differently and like learning kind of how their sound was.
Yep.
With everything going on behind them, so thank you for your work on that.
Exactly, and they can, and each of the can control that on their phones.
You can see them on there, it was amazing.
Yeah, they could actually download on, download a program onto their phones and actually adjust the mix going into their ears. So if they just want to hear piano and the Zoom Haver giving them instructions and then themselves, they can hear just that and nothing else. So, so yeah, it's a, it's a great, uh, it's a great thing to have. It's really how professional orchestras work, and most high schools don't, don't develop that capability. So, uh, we have not changed our ticketing system from last year, been very happy with them. One thing that I would like to move towards in the future, but I'm working with the ticketing system, is having any ticketed performances in the Saber Center use our ticketing system specifically, so that we can track, you know, track what the revenues are, because basically I have to go on their word of how many tickets they sell. Forte has been using it, um, because with them being a fairly close partner with the school district, uh, I can have them, I trust them for that. But to have that, to have them have access, they have access to all of the shows in our ticketing system. I'm working with the ticketing provider to have it so that an outside organization can have access to their event, but not all of the events on our system, just their event. So, so that's something that's moving forward. Uh, we did not integrate that into the board, into the new policy, because the technology hasn't been developed for that, in that ticketing system yet. But it's something that we are working, moving towards, and so there will be an addendum probably coming out to the, uh, to the policy when that technology is actually in place. We also have live stream access. Those are actually partner companies that are run by the same organization. Uh, due to rights necess, necessities, our live stream events can only be broadcast live. If we put them on YouTube, something like that, we would actually need to have different copyright access to provide that. But they said, but in talking with, with ASCAP and B M I, they said, if it's just a live stream that is only available live, then, and behind an access wall, it doesn't have to be a paywall, but an access wall, then it didn't, they are considered as a live attendee. So there's no different copyright that we need to secure for that.
Do we offer this now? Did we?
Yes, yep. Yep, and the numbers for live streams, it varies by event quite a bit. Uh, a lot of it comes down to whether the, uh, whether the, the conductor, teacher actually sends out notices to the families of, hey, we have a live stream for any, you know, out of the area, or someone that doesn't, doesn't have the health to, you know, to attend live or anything, that they can get an access code for free to, to watch a live stream. So sometimes we have no one log into the live stream, and sometimes we'll have thirty or forty people, you know.
Does that require additional staff to be able to have the live stream? I mean, is somebody working the camera, or is it just set up and let to go, or?
Uh, typically, I actually have very good students that run the lighting and sound, and so typically, I'll actually run the cameras, because I'm up there supervising the students, making sure that everything runs smoothly, and otherwise, I'd just be standing there watching them. So I usually run the cameras. I do have a couple of students interested in that, and I'm trying to work with the, uh, the video production classes of having, having them, those students come in for a small practicum of learning live video switching versus just edited video switching, which is what they primarily do right now. But that's, that's been an ongoing, there's ongoing conversations about, uh, how to structure that into their, uh, classroom acquire, class requirements.
And so every, um, music event is live streamed, but not all theatrical events?
Not theatrical events, because there are strict copyrights for theatrical events. They're still concerned that people could record it, things like that, and, uh, and with theatrical events, they are very much more, very much tighter on their copyrights. So, yep. Uh, some, sometimes there are live stream, like when, a couple of years ago, when we did Songs for New World, that actually did have live stream rights available, so we did live stream that. Most Disney shows have live stream rights, because they own the entire show and can do that. Uh, most shows have several people involved in writing and music and, and all that, and they would need to get all parties involved agreeing on that, and so most don't even bother to search it and seek it out.
Sure.
All right. So our gate attendance was eleven thousand, six hundred and forty-five. That includes all district events and community events. That does not include live streams. Live streams, we had two hundred and sixteen people sign up for live stream access.
How does this compare to previous years?
Uh, it is greater than last year. Last year was nine thousand, six hundred, so it is, uh, it is an increase. And, um, Ms. Persky actually had some questions that, uh, that she had sent my way earlier, or, uh, yesterday evening, yesterday afternoon, uh, asking how many were for, uh, were our district events versus community events? And, uh, and that number is, district events accounted for five thousand, two hundred and forty-one of those eleven thousand. So the community, so it's about half and half between district events, district music and drama events, and, uh, and community events.
Since district music events typically aren't ticketed, right?
Right.
Do you just have a door counter?
Uh, we actually, usually Todd, Todd Serpik, our house manager, uh, does a head count during the event. He goes in and just kind of like, kind of counts up each section and, uh, and gives me a count at the end of the, end of the evening. There were a couple of events that I did not get a count last year, because he wasn't working, and I didn't think until afterwards, oh, yeah, I should, should have got a head count, because we. But, uh, but it's something I'm trying to keep, keep better track of, so that we know, you know, we know how many people are coming to events. But, uh, but yeah. So like I said, about half of that is, uh, district attendance and half of it is community events.
It would be interesting to track that, so like next year, when you come, to sort of break that out for us and just show growth.
Yep.
Or not, but there will be growth, trends, yeah.
Yes, growth trends. Yeah, I will, I will certainly do that. I'll add that in for next year.
Thanks.
And along with the ticket revenues for ticketed events, this includes, um, all community events that are ticketed, the U W band, the drama productions, things like that. Our music events, district music events are not ticketed, they're, uh, they're free for, for the public. And, uh, of this number, let's see here. Where is it? Oh, um, twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and nineteen was school hosted events versus community events. So there, the majority of that is community events that, uh, that we still get a, we still get a seat fee that we, that, from the, uh, from the events, from rental events, but, uh, but the majority of the ticket revenues are from the, uh, from the public events. But that goes to show that when we start hosting our own, our own public events, the market is there to, uh, to actually increase revenues for the Saber Center. And that going into whatever fund the district and board deem necessary for those, for any sort of funding, you know, any sort of ticket revenue funds to go to, whether it's general fund or something specific to, uh, to increasing the, uh, increasing those opportunities.
And that's not rental revenue, just ticket.
Yeah, that'd be ticket revenues.
No rental.
Yeah, not rental revenues. Rental revenues go into general fund.
Our general fund or the Saber Center general fund?
I, uh, Mr. Cromie, I believe you could speak to that more accurately than myself.
Yep, so our, uh, district-run events, or the events that we run, go into our general fund. Essentially, they offset, um, the Fall Play, Spring Musical, the events that we're hosting essentially offset the budgets that we run. Um, the other rentals fall into our normal rental facility policy, which is a fund ten, um, fund ten account.
So the Saber Center doesn't sort of have its own isolated self-sustaining budget, is what you're saying?
It has an allocation from the district as well, but it's not in a direct relation to ticket sales.
Okay.
It's not a special revenue fund?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Okay. All right, so, um, I can, we're continuing with our tech crew club as a, uh, as a high school activities club. We had twenty-seven students registered in that club this year. Uh, they've all been involved to varying degrees, a lot with the Fall Play, Spring Musical, and I've got about half a dozen that are, uh, are very involved in the music programs as well, to, uh, to do lighting and sound and interested in, in the video things for, uh, for setting that up, as well as helping set the stage for the music shelves, because that takes a few people to, uh, to set those up. So I've gotten, uh, gotten good response, good involvement. Um, our middle school program that, uh, that we, that came over, we actually had to limit the number of students coming over from the middle school, because we just had too many sign up, that it would not have been safe in the shop. So, because you can only supervise so many, so many students with, uh, with hand drills and, and painting before it, things can get out of hand. So, the tech crew does a lot of things. Here's some pictures from the Fall Play, making masks. I had students actually design costumes, set construction. We use the, uh, the music department recording booth to record some vocal effects. So there were some pre-recorded vocal effects happening in the, uh, Fall Play, but those were the actual high school performers that were recorded and the effect put on those recordings. Uh, these pictures are actually from that, uh, the middle school drama program, and even the students in the booth running the lights, sound, making all the calls, were actually, uh, were actually middle school students. So it's a great opportunity for them to, to get acquainted with the equipment, and, uh, and it should help our numbers going forward for, for tech crew involvement.
I will just personally say that's really an excellent opportunity, having had middle schoolers go through both doing the performance at the middle school and now, um, being able to perform at the high school. It was, you know, it's always been fun, but the students really have gotten a much, um, like a different, I don't want to say better, but kind of a better experience, being able to come and use the Saber Center and all that.
I think it's, I think it's a more developed experience, yeah. It's, uh, because they have opportunities to do more, more set painting, set building, setting up lights, working, working sound cues, sound effects, and, uh, and you can see the, the set for their show wasn't just, you know. And, and you can see the, the set for their show wasn't just, you know, a stack of walls. They, they built out trees and, and the, the walls on either side actually turned, had multiple, multiple little vignettes on them. And so, so it was a great opportunity for the, for the students and they were very engaged. Okay, now to the Saber Center survey. We sent out a survey last spring to community members and about community events. Because the Saber Center was always, was built on the premise of being a district and community facility. It's been very well utilized by the district as a district facility. There, it's had spotty use over the years for community events. I've been trying to increase community involvement with the, with bringing in events to the Saber Center. To, to varying success, most of it's been rental events and they have very specific audience. We would like to expand that to a broader audience of bringing in outside music events, outside speaker series and, and such. But I wanted to, to reach out to the community and ask the community what they want to see. Instead of just making, taking shots in the dark of, well, do they want a stand-up comedian? Do they want a lecture series? What, what is the community actually interested in? We had one hundred and twenty-eight total respondents, which I was really hoping for many more. I know that the notices went out in the district newsletter and I believe Franklin Find. It's Franklin Find, right?
No, that's the district, the Franklin City Newsletter.
The City Newsletter, yeah. I'm not sure how much it went out on social media accounts. And I think that's where a lot of people get their community engagement is on those social media accounts. Which, for the Saber Center, myself, I actually don't have any Saber Center-specific social media accounts running. There is one that, that our musical director started for FHS Drama to, to, you know, push out notices for the Fall Play, Spring Musical and such. But I, but I'm not sure how the district involves with social media. And that's something I probably would need to speak with our district communications director, Chad Kafka, about. So. So some of the results from the, from the survey. Average age of respondents was third, was between thirty-one and fifty. If we put the next age group up to, to sixty years old, that would be nearly ninety percent of the respondents. So that's kind of the market of who would be, who would be most involved in coming to, coming to shows as well. Nearly half of that was actually the thirty-one to forty age range, which I was actually expecting it to be an older, older age range, older audience. But. And then online ticketing was overwhelmingly the favorite, the preferred way of securing tickets for a performance. But the other boxes are over the phone or at the box office day of the event. Having box office hours is definitely a valuable thing to have. But I'm not sure if we would need to have like a staffing position of having a box office manager. Except maybe during those events, having someone, you know, similar to how Activities has their concessions and ticket folks for, for athletic events. But, but I don't think we'd need to like expand any staffing for, for that. So the way people actually saw the community events survey, newsletter, website, social media, most effective. And they're about tied for the, for responses of how people actually heard about the survey. So there were some social media. I just don't know how much it went out to social media with the, with the response numbers that we had. And, and I, as far as the price range people are interested and willing to pay, actually the, the higher price range of, of fifteen to twenty-five dollars was actually the, the most popular thing. People want quality entertainment rather than just inexpensive entertainment. So that, that does bode well for bringing in very good touring acts and things like that to, to actually get those ticket sales. Looking at what some tickets are for community events at other facilities nearby in Oak Creek, South Milwaukee, West Alice, some of their events are sixty dollars plus. So it might be, it, I would be hesitant to, to book something in, that would demand that type of price until we can establish ourselves as a place to, to come and see events like that. So that's why we capped it at the twenty-five dollar because, because, you know, we don't want to overextend and overexpose ourselves as we start developing community events. This is really hard to read, but theatrical shows were the most popular request with stand-up comedy and vocal, vocal music coming in, coming in second and third, but very close to each other for the respondents. Write-in topics included educational speakers, TED Talk style, cultural enrichment, activities and spiritual motivation, like spiritual leadership, spiritual family guidance, things like that. So. And then theatrical music and musicals and comedies were the most popular over dramas or, or small, you know, like two-person show type of, type of things for theater events. And then our next steps, if we, if we move forward towards having, having community events. Like I said, I don't want to overexpose the district or, or anything. I want to go in, go into having community events that we host very easy so that, so that we don't put, put any finances at risk. So the next steps are meeting with the Wisconsin Presenters Network, which we are a member. I am a member of that group. It's a group of venues around the state that, that host events for the communities. So the Shower Center up in, up in Hartford, we actually had a meeting there a couple of months ago. The venue in Whitewater at the University, La Crosse has a venue. I've met a few of those directors and working with them, I can kind of get an idea of, of price ranges, of what booking fees would be, as well as partnering with some of these organizations, some of these nearby venues for book routing so that someone doesn't just, isn't coming in from California just to Franklin, but coming to Franklin and then going up to La Crosse and then maybe going to Green Bay so that their travel fees are, are less for the major travel to get to the Wisconsin area. So that's what the Presenters Network offers, is a network to actually, you know, bounce ideas off of and, and also work with, work with the talent agents to get the best fit for the venue. Also investigating budget needs of what are the booking fees for bringing in, bringing in events? I know the UW Marching Band was about the thirty-five-hundred-dollar exposure thereabouts. And we were able to cover, cover those expenses through the ticket sales. But, you know, I know some, you know, some events are twenty, thirty, forty thousand dollars to bring in the, bring the, the event in. So kind of getting an idea of what types of events might, we, we might want to, might want to bring in. Also finding calendar dates that, that work with community interest, community availability and Saber Center availability because our, our calendar does fill up quite, quite quickly. Our calendar priorities have always been the district events first, community events second, and then the greater area of any other, any other area events coming in third as far as calendar scheduling prioritization. So there are different threshold dates for when school-associated events need to be on the calendar before we, and then we open it up to community organizations for about a month or so. And then, and then the general area events can be booked in our calendar. So that, so it protects the district for having first choice of dates. So, so, you know, say the, say even a community organization, like say Forte Theater is like, oh, we'd like to have these dates. Like, well, I've got this organization coming in, you know, it's a dance organization coming in and they requested that weekend. Or the district itself wants to put something on. It's like, well, I already have something booked. So I don't want to put the district in that position. Also developing marketing plan, which is a huge thing for the ticketing, ticket sales. Like has been seen with the, with the survey going out, there are only one hundred and twenty-eight respondents. We only saw one hundred and twenty-eight tickets to an event. It's very hard to recoup expenses. So getting, getting that marketing plan of how are we going to reach the community members? How are we going to get word out of events and developing a comprehensive plan for that? As well as developing a list of agencies, perspective, prospective talent and, and, you know, and what budget ranges we're looking at with, with that talent. And then our Saber Center website. All right, further questions?
Anybody have any questions, comments?
I'd really like to see a point in the future when, and I think this is what you're moving toward, the Saber Center is truly able to say, here are, here is our program for twenty-three, twenty-four of events that are open to the community. Sure, any community member could come to Southwood Glen's Elementary Choir Concert, but that's certainly not, or, or to APA's Spring Recital. But I, I forget your phrase, your phraseology for identifying rentals versus truly community events. And Forte is sort of a hybrid model, but this past year I think it was Forte and then the UW Band, or I think those two. And they had pretty, I think, great attendance and a lot of positive community response, especially for the UW.
Yes.
Band visiting. So I, I'm very hopeful that next year when you come and report to us, it's, we're able to see a little bit more of here is Saber Center presents, or however you want to.
Yes.
Package it and then be able to push that out to the community to be able to plan their sort of yearly cultural planning or whatever you want to say.
Yep, absolutely.
How many similar venues are there within, say?
Twenty-five miles.
Twenty-five miles and, and, and what does the Saber Center look like with a report like this versus, versus somewhere else?
Right. Well, basically twenty-five miles would be pretty much Racine and Milwaukee counties, basically. So, so basically, I know of about six, you know, school-associated facilities, not counting like the Milwaukee Theater District, because that's a whole different level of production. But, but nearby, West Alice, Mesquiko, Oak Creek, South Milwaukee, all have event series that they do. And I know that, I know that they, they will book fairly, fairly high, you know, high-cost, high-cost bookings, but I believe they do, you know, make decent revenues. Every one of those facilities does have more than one staff member helping, helping develop that. So they have a managing director and a technical director so that they're, so that they can kind of divvy up those tasks. Because it does become a very large task to try and build out a marketing plan, negotiate contracts, negotiate, you know, hospitality, all of that, as well as getting all of the, getting the space physically ready to host the, host the event is a very large task.
That was kind of a, you opened the door. So I was going to say, as I was writing down all these different goals that you have from, you know, increasing revenue, broadening programming, technical improvements and maintenance, developing a curriculum for your youth people and then marketing. Is this more than, is it unfair for, for us to be expecting perfection in all of these areas?
Well, I hope you don't expect perfection because I, you know, I am human.
Okay.
It, it is a very full-time job to, to actually balance all of the, all of the different, different tasks on my plate. I, I like to joke that I'm the, I'm the man who wears seven hats. But, but it is, it is true at times with, with that. I've actually spoken with Mr. Cromie about a lot of the community events, the rental events especially, that I'm venue manager and technical director. The renters do pay a technical director hourly rate for the rentals of using that revenue to actually hire in a technical director so that it takes that off my plate for those rental events. And that, that hourly position being offset by those rental, rental revenues. Now that wouldn't cover any of the, any of, any district-sponsored events, but the renters would then be paying that position essentially. Similar to the way that they pay our student technicians to run the sound and lighting boards. Because I feel my position as the full-time event director is kind of included in the rental that I'm, I'm facilities manager. But it's hard to wear the two hats of being facilities manager out in the public, in public spaces as well as being in charge of all the technical necessities during the event. So it's, I get kind of pulled back and forth a lot.
Well, it sounds like you need more resources to really move this to the next level.
Right, yep.
Is there opportunities to partner with? I mean, do we have to duplicate the marketing? Can we play off other entities around us that already have?
Yeah, I mean, that, that is one thing with the Wisconsin Presenters Network is they, they do have resources for, you know, community engagement, media access, things like that. Then it's kind of, you know, other, other people's networks. You know, there's like, there's the, there's the concept in business of using other people's money, other people's resources, you know, also other people's networks. Not taking advantage of that, but partnering with them and offering, bringing to the table what you have to offer and also utilizing what they, what strengths they have. And so, so yeah, it is, it is a big task, which is why it's been moving slowly of getting community events, events together. And we would also have to sort out, you know, with Mr. Cromie and, and the board of, you know, where, where the seed money would come from to actually start making bookings. So, because right now there is, there isn't a budget established for, you know, call it speculative entertainment options. So. So that's a.
That's an interesting phrase.
Well, I mean, it's.
No, no, it's accurate. A lot of questions. Wait for answers for next year.
Well, hopefully, hopefully if we can start putting things together, we can get on the board. Before we would put any sort of community events forward, we'd get on the board, board agenda and bring that forward. So hopefully it would even be before, before this time next year when I'd bring my Saber Center update. I would like to, I would like to dip our toe in the water of having, of hosting a community event and seeing, seeing how that, how that develops.
At one time there was a group that wanted to build a performing arts center here in Franklin. And I believe the man who was spearheading that drive still does live in Franklin. I wonder if he might be someone you would want to talk to and kind of pick his brain and see what that group wanted to do at, at that time.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. I have heard, heard of that. I, I'm, I moved into the community from Des Moines when I, when I, when I accepted the job. So I, I had heard that there was a development and then that kind of transitioned into becoming the Rock Facility and everything, I believe.
There's a former board member that was part of that group, a former school board member. And then there is also another gentleman that was really leading the charge with that. So that might be someone you would like to maybe reach out to.
Absolutely.
Because I know it is hard for you, because I know you did move to the community.
Yep, yeah. So I don't have a holden, have a, you know, have the comprehensive grasp of the history in the community. But yeah, if you, if you have, you know, if you, if you can put me in contact, that'd be, that'd be great. That'd be fantastic. Because myself, I am, I am open to, you know, kind of a community partnership of, you know, kind of a split revenues type of thing of, in lieu of a specific rental revenue, sharing the upside of someone else putting up the, putting up the seed money to make a booking using the Saber Center and sharing profit. So. Which might be a way to, to help, you know, mitigate risk. So, which might be a way to, uh, to help, you know, mitigate risk as we, as we go into having more community events.
I have nothing to say. Do you ever contact the dance studios? I'm thinking of all the, I have two daughters that would answer, so.
Right.
Um, that's where my mind goes. Do you ever contact the dance studios that are nearby? Because I know they use different venues.
Right. Next step is the only, next step has been come, using the Saber Center for several years. Uh, we had a dance studio out of, uh, out of Racine, um, come up and use the, uh, use the facility, but, uh, but I haven't reached out to dance studios. My, as I said, my summer bookings get, and my December and June bookings get very busy, so, and that's kind of the prime season for the, uh, for dance, dance events, so.
It has to be a balance between revenue generators, which is, that's a pure rental, and that's a very, that's not something you'd advertise to the community, you know?
Right.
A dance, a dance recital? I mean, you could advertise.
There's dance competitions too that come from all across the nation.
But again, sort of a balance between things, you would say, community, come and watch this event versus this is a great moneymaker.
Right, well, I'm, I'm thinking about making some money.
Yeah, the, the dance competitions are good moneymakers. Uh, they, they can be stressful on the facility because, and on the staff, you know, especially custodial staff, because a lot of the dance competitions will run from seven in the morning until 11:00 at night for, you know, Saturday, Sunday. They'll come in Friday, like right after school, start at six o'clock in the evening and run till 11:00 at night, come back at seven in the morning. Because I've, I've done, I've, I've worked those, I've had those, I've hosted those at previous facilities, and it's, it's a very busy, tiring weekend.
It's a lot, but it's a lot of money.
Yeah, it's a lot, but it's a lot of money.
All right, anybody else, any more questions? Comments? Thank you very much.
I'll stay up here, because I think the next thing on the agenda is the...
Yeah, Saber Center for Performing Arts Facility Use Policy 3633. Uh, Mr. Cromie, please.
So, what you see in front of you, or up on the screen, is the redlined version of the policy. Um, really, there's just some technical pieces in the actual dialogue of the policy. The biggest changes to the actual policy itself were really pulling out that Wisconsin statute reference. It's stated in the dialogue, but really listing it below, which is, um, in par, in, in line with what our other policies do. And then the addition of some cross-reference to board policies, um, is specifically related to visitors and volunteers, advertising promotion, smoking tobacco use, facility use, and tying it to that, weapons and on-school, weapons on-school premises. Um, but really linking those to make sure that we're all integrated when we think about our board policies, so pulling that out. Um, and then you'll notice that the adopted and revised language at the bottom is also highlighted in red. Um, it's listed at the top, but in our board policies, if we follow the standard process, it's listed at the bottom of the policy, so really moving it down there to be in line. So, the actual policy itself, um, again, a lot of technical language and then really drawing out that we're integrated with, um, other things that are also happening in the district. Um, you will also notice that we've added some, um, pieces to the procedure, so how we really interact with the board policy. Um, those really stem around making sure we have the proper flooring, so if a dance company's coming in, or if any of our shows are having a dance, or dancing as part of it, making sure the right floor is on, um, uh, on the surface of the stage. Probably number two is a, a new one, so, uh, making sure we have a certified crowd hand, uh, a crowd manager in hand for 200, every 250 people attending. And so, Tracy and I have talked about this one a few times. Sometimes groups like to use students and have them on hand to have, uh, I really focused on, let's make sure we have adults, first of all, so if we have an altercation happen, and it's usually not people like arguing out loud, but it could be divorced parents who are there and deciding who's picking up the child, and having somebody who's there to handle that. The additional piece that Tracy will work with is then like training them, what happens if something really is an emergency that's happening right here and now, and we have 700 people in the Saber Center? Um, so having them trained to know where emergency exits are, or where safe spaces are located, or what to do if it's, the tornado siren goes off. Um, and so, that's probably the biggest addition inside of here, but that's really just a safety standpoint.
And there are training, uh, online training resources from the, uh, U.S. Fire Marshals Association. That's who, in the U.S., oversees crowd management, event management, uh, safety, is Fire Marshals Association, and every 250 is in line with their guidelines.
Um, and then, uh, Tracy did, um, a review of area rentals, so, Mike, you had asked what's in the area, so Tracy took a look at those, took a look at our rental prices, made some adjustments there. Um, one of the bigger pieces of that is really moving to an hourly rate, um, in many categories. So, if you need the space for four hours, we're gonna charge you for four hours, not just gonna charge for the day, um, but let's charge for the use that's actually happening, um, and make sure that we're counting for the time that Tracy is spending there. So, um, Tracy, like, we talked a little bit about the, um, the dance competition model here, right? So, we, um, you know, Creek had run a few of those, right? That is a long weekend. That's like a 30-hour weekend for somebody that's working in that particular piece, so we need to make sure if we were to bring that here, that it's worth our effort to bring that in. So, while it is a lot of revenue, it's someone's time. Like, it's, Tracy would be giving up his entire weekend to run that, to do that, and a lot of sleep. Um, and then the last piece, number four, again, grammatical, updating some explanatory statements that are located within there to help try to clarify it as best as we possibly can, um, within the procedure portion.
Wondering about the beverages in the lobby situation. Realistically, a lot of events I've been at have sold water. Um, is this gonna be tightened up, or?
Uh, I'm okay with water, and speaking with our custodial staff, water doesn't really cause damage to any of the, uh, any of the items in the facility. Um, as far as any other beverages, sodas, coffee, anything like that, uh, that is still not permitted at events. Water in a, you know, non-breakable sealed container, I'm perfectly fine with, and speaking with custodians, they're perfectly fine with it as well. If there's a water spill, it cleans up easily and doesn't cause damage to any of the materials in the, in the Saber Center, as long as it is cleaned up.
That's, but I'm talking the lobby.
Oh, in the lobby?
Yeah, because I mean, kids eat lunch in the lobby.
Yeah.
So, it's...
Yeah, rule number six on the policy where it says food and drink of any kind are prohibited in the Saber Center, stage, house, lobby, and seating areas.
I guess I would...
Except water, water's allowed.
That's, he's saying in the Saber Center, you can bring in a bottle of water if it has a cap on it.
Yeah.
My question is about the lobby.
Would you have the water and take it in there? So, I guess...
No, she's saying there, are you saying there could be, there could be other things welcome in the lobby?
Consumed in the lobby.
In the, in the lobby itself, I'm, I, yeah, I, uh, I'm, I'm okay with, with food and beverages being in the lobby, because that is a tiled surface. Like you said, they, they have lunch in the lobby concurrently. Um, and, and many of the events do sell, you know, candies at concession.
That's also in the administrative rules, so that can be adjusted.
Changed without us, that's true.
Yeah, but, uh, but on the stage, in the seating areas in the house, not permitted, but yes, in the lobby. So, perhaps we'd need to edit that to just remove the lobby. That's it.
And then my only other question is...
Page two, number six.
Only because, you know, I'm involved with Forte, and it's a professional theater group. Um, is there any possibility, I know in the state statute, there is language that's saying if it's an event outside of school hours, when there's not student activities going on, and with permission of the board, alcohol could be sold. Is there any possibility of considering adding that, so that wine could be sold at intermission of like Forte Theater events?
So, that has come up, and I've tried to look into that and haven't found a conclusion though, where people are getting around that yet.
Okay.
So, I did hear like another...
If people ever settle.
Yeah, well, I did hear another theater, like, that's run through a school, Performing Arts Center, that potentially is doing it, but haven't had confirmation. So, we have been trying to find an answer to that, but so far, haven't found what the workaround is.
I know, I know most facilities would actually have to have a state-issued liquor license to serve alcohol at all, so I don't know if the district would have to have that specifically, but, but yeah.
I think that, I think if you open that door, you end up with every booster group or fundraisers or the kind of thing maybe wanting to, it's after school hours, can we have alcohol, and every pasta dinner, and...
There's gonna be really strict rules on it. Like, I don't, like I said, anytime everyone's like, oh, we're gonna look into this, and you ask, oh, who are you looking into, and like, what does it look like? Nobody's been able to point to someone who's done it yet, or how they've worked around it, so.
Just one of those things.
We'll find it, we'll open the door to the discussion, just have a thought, I guess.
Sounds good. All I can do is ask.
Yep.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Tracy.
Um, we have to approve this, right? I move that we approve it.
No, it's on...
Twenty-sixth will be approved.
Oh, we're just talking, alright.
The next two you get to approve.
Next, next time we get to approve it, or not.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, grading system policies.
Can we take a five-minute break?
Can we, I think we're gonna be, I think we're gonna be, um, I would guess that the meeting's gonna be five more minutes. Would that be?
That's fine, meeting's five minutes, then.
We want it. Maksu, you were the only one not here last week when we discussed the grading policy item. Do you have a lot of questions about it?
So, the only question...
What's Maksu go grab a bite to?
Yeah, yeah.
Let's take a five-minute break.
You know, uh, why don't we finish in ten, because we can, we can all go together.
Okay.
So, the question which I had for the grading policy is that...
I'm sorry, no, you're fine.
Shall I start the question, or shall I...
Yeah, please. Uh, so, Mr. Blessington, um, policy sixty-three fourteen, uh, we're talking about, um, so please, Maksu.
So, you know, we definitely want to go away from the percentage, uh, system where, you know, you get 70%, 80%, 90%, you know? But in reality, when the students are given, for example, questions, multiple, you know, 10 questions, you know, on a test, how, although you want to kind of, you know, get to where the proficient, you know, that level kind of in a grading, how practically the teachers are able to grade the students? Because, for example, you have 10 questions, out of that, you have six right, because even for, for example, at UW Madison, for example, you know, wherever a student is going, they still take percentage, and then they transfer into this and all that stuff. So, there's a process where number of questions you answered right, and then that's transferred to this and that, all that, so there's a process. So, if you don't have the percentages, which was the concern which I had, you know, how will the teachers, and I had a discussion with the, uh, Mike, you know, the principal of the school, he said, we are trying to educate the teachers about grading the students about the proficiency of the subject rather than the percentage of the questions, you know? So, for me, it's difficult comprehension. If you have 10 questions and you go five wrong, then you have only 50%, you know? Then, how is the teacher able to assess the, you know, the proficiency of student on that subject?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, uh, really, I mean, when you think about like a standards-based grading system versus traditional grading system, I think it's a really valid question. We talk about multiple choice, and they, in the end, we're trying to like, you know, in that example you provided, like, what would be the learning target or targets associated with that? And then really like looking at, does the student, uh, understand, like, can demonstrate competency toward that learning target? So, whether it's, whether that's eight or nine, I mean, I think that's where there's like, there's some, some professional judgment in that example, and then we would lean heavily into like a rubric, and that's really, I mean, laid out in our administrative guidelines and what we're proposing with the policy update. So, there's an educational piece with our teachers and like a professional development piece that we need to wrap our head around. I mean, in the end, we want to report out on those course targets. So, like, what those course targets in relationship to like what we demonstrate, um, like proficient, or if they're still developer, they're still basic or showing minimal knowledge. Now, that doesn't necessarily come as clean as like, did they get three out of 10? I mean, I think there's more to that. Um, we would look at, course out, like, multiple measures of like assessing students, and hopefully it won't just be on a multiple-choice type format. Um, there'd be different ways that we would assess students, but, um, in the end, we're, we're looking to like provide like feedback per the, per the learning target or targets.
So, right now, the current teachers, do they have a good understanding of, okay, this is the subject, it's such objectives of the lesson, and I'm going to grade the student based upon the objectives of, and, you know, of the lesson to be learned, rather than, you know, okay, you have 10 questions, you know, you have six wrong, 10 wrong, you know? Are they, are most of the teachers trained on that? Are they trying to implement that kind of a grading?
Yeah, I would say that, um, we, and I know we weren't able to be at the last one, it's, it really represents, um, just like a change in how we are, how things are entered into Power School. Um, and they used to do this, there's, as you know, this conversion chart, and they would do all that. So, it's really like, really leaning into the standards, which is really the school, which, what the curriculum, our standards is what you all approve, but then teachers understanding what proficiency looks like there. So, um, I, I think the, the policy, especially in administrative guidelines that we're providing, holds us accountable as a school system to make sure there's a rubric provided. We're giving, uh, appropriate and timely developmental feedback. So, um, all those pieces, I think, are in place, but we need to do some like, I don't know, um, probably in some cases, like, do a better job with implementation of what we've set in this district like 10-plus years ago. So, I think getting back to some basics around standards-based grading and some training, and that's why I think drove some of the rationale around like these updates. So, you see, you know, just a couple of things on here, you see the timeline on here, again, the changes we expect to like, if it's approved today, they would start next school year. So, um, yeah, any other, other questions?
Anybody have further questions or comments?
I guess one comes. So, are there, there's still exams, and you're still taking some quizzes and things, but they're just, you don't just take that score and automatically equal proficient, or is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, it, it's really, um, I think it's, it changes the approach and how we're carrying out like the spirit of like what we said we were as a school system 10-plus years ago, and really like the execution of that, and like the, um, I have the, the other policy up, but like, really when you look at, and I know you can't read it there, but this is in your board packet, like, the heart of like the work, I know we get really set on like what this is down here, and like the tension, hopefully your focus is like, you're really looking at what the, the purple section up here, that's, that, that's the meat and potatoes of like, that's the important work when we talk about learning. If we talk about sorting and putting kids into batches, we're talking about learning and making sure kids understand and getting feedback. That's, that's where this part comes in. So, yeah, like, nothing is changing in regards to that, other than, I think, putting some things in place that we can be better at what we said we were gonna do.
I've benefited from being able to have conversations with Mr. Blessington 1011, and at the risk of filling up your calendar, I'm sure if you had more questions about how it looks, he'd be thrilled to meet with you for three to four hours on any given day, right?
No.
But really, the message I gleaned was adding some language to sort of put teeth behind, not teeth, that sounds too aggressive, but just, um, money where our mouth is, that this is, we are gonna be using formative and summative assessments in the correct way that they're meant to be used to help students reach their learning targets. We are really trying to help students meet course objectives, as opposed to just collecting points in a gradebook over the course of the year.
And to your example, Maksu, as I was, as I'm thinking about it, as you were asking about it, if you, if a teacher does give, say, a formative assessment, and correct me if I'm wrong, a formative assessment, and a student gets six out of 10, those 10 questions would be directly tied to these, you know, say, four or five objectives. And so, that teacher would be able to say, okay, Anne really knows her addition, but she does not know her multiplication, and then would be able to tailor that education to that student's needs, to then be able to, you know, address, you know, what, what do I not know? I can add, but I can't multiply. And then, two, when that, you know, in the final grade, instead of, you know, say I get, you know, say I get five out of 10, and I'm gonna get 50%, but in terms of like the numbers and the, um, standards-based grading, they would be able to say, okay, yeah, on addition, you get a four, you'd clearly have that mastered, but on multiplication, you get whatever it would be, a two, because you don't, you know? So, that's where that, you're not gonna get a 50%, a 70%, that, those kind of numbers, but you're gonna, the individual targets are gonna get those individual numbers. Does that make my understanding of your question of responding to?
I think, so, one of the things is that, that's, you know, so the, the piece of... So one of the things is that, that's, you know, so that the piece of the teachers, you know, evaluating that student in the, the, the test because for example, they take ten questions, you know, or whatever it is, the questions are there and able to evaluate each question. Okay, he's able to, you know, master, for example, in multiplication, for example, but you know, still there is a kind of, you know, uh, need to improve on, you know, subtraction, you know, that, that understanding and then implementation of that. When, for me, the concern is that because in the past, in the grading which we have currently, you know, the parents were not happy because ninety-two, for example, was a, a, but ninety-two was a B plus and other districts. And, uh, we're treating ninety plus as A. So our students were at kind of a disadvantage. So that's the thing, you know, we're going to start having discussion with Mike and Mr. Blessington is that I don't want the Franklin School District students to be at a disadvantage when, you know, for example, if you have some, one student is getting for ninety-two, A, and our students are getting B plus, you know? And then the road, you know, and the transcripts is going, goes B plus, then the school is looking at that. But so when we are doing standards-based grading, I want to make sure that our teachers have a good understanding of, okay, you know, it's not about percentage. We are going away from the percentage and we are implementing about the learning objectives.
Yeah. And I think some of your concerns were addressed in our, um, administrative guideline updates.
So only question, request which all I have is that because this will be implementing maybe not at the end of the year, maybe three months, you know, at the, maybe after the, you know, by December, if you can just give us an update of how teachers are able to implement that, you know? Because I just want to see how this is being implemented in, in real life. Yeah. And so that all the teachers are familiar with that, are comfortable with that. And, you know, maybe getting also some kind of feedback from the students that, hey, how do you feel about this? Because, you know, it's very, very important because our, this is a high achieving district and I'm very passionate about, I'm sure all of us are passionate about our kids, uh, not being disadvantaged by any way. I want to make sure that our kids are at the same level. And for example, I'm just looking at the Oak Creek, you know, like Oak Creek, B plus, they are saying three point three-three. We are giving three point three-three even A minus for our students, which is good. We are being generous, but I just want to make sure that we are not cheap and, you know, trying to kind of, you know, being, this one, I just want to make sure that our students are at level and able to compete the same level.
All right, any further comment? Well, as I'm looking for a motion to approve policy sixty-three, fourteen as presented.
So moved.
All right, motion was made by Mrs. Larson, seconded by Mr. Alexandrovich. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. I'm also looking for a motion to approve policy five-eight-zero-one as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made by Dr. Beer, seconded by Mrs. All right, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. And, um, school board liaison reports and community engagement. I know we've all been busy and have reports. Does anybody have anything specific that we need to mention immediately or for the record?
I did, I want to say I did attend the SWSA meeting and one idea that came out of there was that, cause you know, the, the, we had the hearings with the budget and now it goes to legislature. And how can we keep engaged with them? And one idea that came up was to have maybe at the key, the key communicators meeting, we could maybe ask their parents to help get that, you know, messages to legislators on how important education is. It would be one avenue that we might think about doing.
Draw up a little script letter, sample letter.
Right. And some even have, um, some districts have on their websites, under the board's area advocacy toolkits for parents.
It's a good idea.
It's a good idea.
So that they can hear from other people besides school board members.
Do you have some sample letters or sample language that we could use for such an effort?
Me was just yesterday.
Okay. Well, if anything crops up.
Okay. Is that something we could put in a district newsletter or is that more for just our key communicators group? That's, well, that was the idea that came up in the discussion. So I, I have to think through on how we could, uh.
Probably talk about how, how we could, how we could make it.
Doing that, advocating that way or?
I don't know.
The answer is yes, you can put it in there. Like from a, do you, can you like physically do that or like responsibly do? Yes, you can do that. Really, it would be up to the board whether they want to ask the community to advocate for that. And how does the community necessarily feel about that is really what the board would have to weigh in that decision-making process, right? So easy for Mike and I to go up there and talk about it, cause the seven of you all agree with that. We agree with that as administration. But when you start pushing it out and asking community to do that, you have to determine whether you think the community, that's what they really want to do. Or do they agree with it in general? So every community is going to be different on that, right? Some are going to be hundred percent gung-ho and some are going to be, I don't know if that's really for us and all things in between.
But I would think at least the key communicators might be a group that would be, I don't know.
Perhaps talk about it.
Yeah.
I know we're going to be talking about budgeting, so.
Yeah.
Yep. I'm sure there'll be questions asked.
He only gets nine minutes though.
Nine minutes, eight to nine.
I get a, I get a bonus like four to five minutes with the whole group afterwards.
He only had two, he only had two minutes at the, uh.
I won the arm wrestling competition for that, so.
Spend it on advocacy.
Joy finance and that one. All right, uh, board liaison reports, uh, school, school and community engagement reports. Emily talked about a lot of things, um, going on in the community and, uh, we appreciate how that is going. Does anybody have, uh, school board member comments for the debriefing? All right, future agenda items, uh, board officer elections, appointment of CISA One Annual Convention Delegate and CISA One Board of Control Member, um, twenty-three, twenty-four board retreat scheduling, SWSA updates, overtime, safe harbor policy and payroll deduction complaint form, uh, Friends of Franklin recognition, youth mental health report, twenty-three, twenty-four preliminary budget assumptions, health insurance update, and, uh, student transportation policy, student conduct on school bus policy. Perhaps I'll have something to say about that. There will also, um, when we're talking about, uh, board retreat scheduling, um, we will have also talk about evaluations, um, board evaluations. Been working a bit on that, but that's for the future. And, uh, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting. The move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. We are adjourned at seven fifty-eight. Thank you.